The City of Washington, April 26, 2021, the order please. On the agenda, we have ordinance number 6-2021, an ordinance for additional appropriation of the City of Washington, Indiana.
This is just a additional appropriation. We're receiving a federal grant for the intersection of the highway that was given to the right-of-way. And Mayor votes to sign the papers to grant to get this going and the right-of-way.
Yeah.
So since it is a federal grant, we do need an additional appropriation if other than our budget.
Yeah, and that's what we've been doing lately with all this grant money, and this is no exception, and you'll hear later on about the ordinance in the regular council meeting. Anybody know, got any questions on this public hearing? Okay, any council members got any questions on this? Tim? We need to read this to, if we don't need to read this.
I don't think it's a public hearing.
Yeah, okay, I don't hear any questions at that time, so there are no other questions. I'm gonna call this public hearing closed. It's 6:32. Okay, all right, let's call this meeting to order. City of Council, City of Washington, Common Council Meeting, April 26, 2021. May we have a moment of silence for veterans and COVID-19 victims, please? Thank you, may we have pledge allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, may we have roll call, please?
Councilman Lunsford.
Here.
Councilman Brown.
Here.
Councilman Gress.
Here.
Councilman McHampton.
Here.
Councilman Emmens.
Here.
Councilman Dahl.
Here.
All right, all's here present. Approval of the minutes of April 12, 2021, public hearing and regular meeting that's in front of you tonight.
I move we approve those, both as written.
Councilman Dahl makes motion to approve as written, Councilman Gress seconds it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Comments, no, we've got presentation of claims, sorry, presentation of claims that's presented in front of you tonight. Anybody have any questions on these claims? Let's see. Anything stood out, but?
I'll make a motion to the Board of Works.
Councilman Adams makes a motion to send this to the Board of Works and Safety.
Second.
Councilman Brown seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, now, comments by the members of the public, other than what's on the agenda tonight? Okay, hearing done. We have no resolutions tonight. We have two ordinances tonight. We have final reading of ordinance number 6-2021.
Will we read that by title only?
Councilman Dahl makes a motion, read by title only, Councilman Hampton seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
All right, ordinance number 6-2021, additional appropriation of the City of Washington, Indiana.
Okay. Any questions or comments on this ordinance?
I'm looking for approval.
Councilman Gress makes a motion to approve it.
Second.
Councilman Hampton seconds. Roll call, please.
Councilman Lunsford.
Aye.
Councilman Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Gress.
Aye.
Councilman McHampton.
Aye.
Councilman Emmens.
Aye.
Councilman Dahl.
Aye.
Councilman Michelle Walker.
Aye.
Okay, very good. Our second ordinance is an introduction of ordinance number 7-2021.
Make a motion to read that ordinance.
Kempson makes a motion to read that ordinance.
Second.
Second by Councilman Dahl. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
All right, ordinance number 7-2021, an ordinance to establish the American Rescue Plan, ARP, Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Grant, 176, whereas the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 provides assistance to local communities as they continue to combat the COVID-19 pandemic, whereas under the ARP, the City of Washington, Indiana, Davis County, is expected to receive funds from the federal government, whereas State Examiner Directive 2021-1 issued by the Indiana State Examiner dictates that any funds received from the ARPA must be deposited into a separate fund, whereas any monies deposited into the fund may only be used as permitted by Section 603(c) of the Social Security Act, as added by Section 9901 of the ARP, and whereas the Common Council of the City of Washington desires to establish an ARP Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund in which federal assistance from the ARP shall be deposited in accordance with the State Examiner Directive 2021-1. Now therefore, be it ordained that the Common Council of the City of Washington finds as follows. One, pursuant to State Examiner Directive 2021-1, the Common Council of the City of Washington does hereby create Fund Number 176, which is a special non-reverting fund designated as the ARP Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. Two, any monies deposited into said fund may only be utilized for the following purposes as specified in Section 603(c) of the Social Security Act. Three, these local fiscal recovery funds will remain available to cover qualifying expenses through December 31, 2024. Four, monies received into this fund will require an additional appropriation, Common Council approval, and the fiscal officer will review the requested use of the monies along with the city attorney for compliance with ARPA requirements. The fiscal officer will also maintain detailed accounting records of the fund to provide for future audits of the ARP fund. Five, a plan will be developed and approved by the fiscal body that will outline the City of Washington's specific use of funds and will fall within the following guidelines set forth by Section 603(c) of the Social Security Act to respond to the public health emergency caused by COVID-19, to provide assistance to households, small businesses, and nonprofits related to the negative economic impacts of COVID-19, to aid impacted industries such as tourism, travel, and hospitality, to respond to workers performing essential work during the COVID-19 public health emergency by providing premium pay to eligible workers of Washington, Indiana that are performing such essential work, or by providing grants to eligible employees that have eligible workers who perform essential work, for the provision of government services to the extent of the education in revenue, of the reduction in revenue of the City of Washington, Indiana, due to the COVID-19 public health emergency relative to revenues collected in the most recent full fiscal year of the City of Washington, Indiana, prior to the public health emergency, and to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. Be it further ordained that this ordinance be in full force and effect from and after its passage by the Common Council and signing by the mayor, passed and adopted by the Common Council of the City of Washington, Indiana, this 10th day of May, 2021.
Okay. Any questions or comments regarding this ordinance?
We know how much we expect.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
That was gonna be my question.
Yes, we have.
We should get about $1.3 million dollars around between the middle of May and June.
Yeah.
And then by next year, we will get the same amount, so altogether $2.6 million.
And how much have we gotten already?
None on this one, none.
Not on this one, but I mean before, we've already gotten some COVID-19.
We had $250,000 to help the businesses.
But didn't we already pay for like city services?
And then we had $300, I think it was $394,000 we got at the very beginning. That was for like the PPE to, you know, like make things more safe for COVID.
Yeah, and then our police salaries.
Police salaries, I'm right, too.
Yeah, we got police salaries, so.
So is any of this money your mark for anything already that's COVID-related?
No, not this yet, because the guidelines hasn't been really clear yet. I mean, they've told us some things, they said, you know, lost revenue, they said a few other things that we could, but it's really not perfectly clear yet. So we were, early on, they suggested, take the money, this is what I was told early on, so everybody's got a different perspective, and put it in a fund and let it, you know, sit there until, I mean, you know, till you figure it out. They talked about water and sewer projects, they talk about several things, I'm trying to think, but nobody, you know, it's just kind of like unclear. They keep changing, you keep hearing different things, other people have different perspective of it, and they got different plans, I think, we, you know, we gotta be kind of careful with this and watch how we spend it, we don't want to spend it unappropriately.
Certainly don't want to pay it back.
No, and this is good till December of 2024.
They have some time to work it out.
Yes, but, but there's a lot of things in play, a lot of Zoom meetings on this, Beth said on all kinds of meetings on, you know, the Treasurers had their conference, and they talked about this, it's been a topic now for every time you turn around.
Probably a little over a month.
Yeah.
This is basically the first step.
Yeah.
You gotta find a.
Yeah, they told us we had to do that by the end of April.
You have to have a fund, that's it. So when the money comes in, put it in the fund. I want to have the money, then we, we, and I say we, I mean, it's gonna be you and whoever else you want to have input into it, to develop a plan. And a plan would have to be very detailed, specific, and, but it would have to fall within the guidelines that they have set forth. If it is federal money, they will, how, it has to be accounted for, and it has to be approved, the projects have to be approved.
And not just one project, it could be multi-projects, yes.
It could be so much for water, sewer, infrastructure.
I got some ideas on that, but we'll see.
Is it coming directly from the feds, or is it going through the state?
Well, it's coming from feds to the state, I believe, and then the state to us.
Yes, if you are a population of over 50,000, you get it directly from the feds.
Yeah.
If you are under 50,000, it goes to the state, and the state will give us.
Do you like Department of Commerce or Finance? Bank or something like that, or?
I'm not sure.
They haven't, I haven't really heard exactly, but we, I thought probably the Department of Commerce and the state level, but I don't know 100% on that. But they said we had to have this to the council and have this done by the end of April and have this in place, so when the money comes.
Do they supply us with this, with the template for the ordinance, do they supply us with it, or?
Yeah, we, I, me and I worked on that, but that came, some of it came a little bit from one city's ordinance and another city's ordinance, and we kind of put it together to.
To answer, they really, I don't think came out with a template, yeah, they just let you.
So the ordinance says it's a gray area, and then we got all this stuff on there that says, I'm afraid if we pass it, then it's a gray area, why are we?
Well, the ordinance can be amended, if they, if the federal government would change their mind and decide that we could spend it on something other than these things listed, we would have to amend the ordinance.
These are things that they have listed.
Yes, yes.
What we know.
We know this much.
So they're just saying that they're listed, but they're.
And broadband, we probably won't do, because the county is planning on doing a big broadband grant, so, you know.
So if, do we need to do, change the rules and do this tonight? If it has to be done in eight, twelve?
Well, we have to, we have to create this fund, and I think later, I mean, you know, we create the fund, correct me if I, I think we can come back later if we have to.
And amend it.
Well, he's talking about suspending rules to pass it tonight.
Pass it tonight.
I don't know, I mean.
That's the Tim question, if you think that's.
Yeah, well, I mean, if, I, I wasn't familiar with the fact that it had to be done by the end of April.
Well, they suggested that, they suggested that, but.
I don't know, I don't know, but sure, I don't think we're gonna get it before they.
I think once we got it in place, it started, I think we're, we're fine.
I think we'll be okay.
Yeah.
We just do it.
I think we're fine, just because they want you to take the council and get it started. I, I don't think they said you had, yeah, and, and by doing this tonight, we've got it in, in play.
Okay.
It's not been a lot of stuff come out on this, I mean, there've been a lot of meetings, but.
Yeah, it's going so fast, no one's really.
Yeah, yeah, they haven't.
I mean, it's just, it's very basic, we gotta find a home.
And, you know, like, say, lost revenue, we know that's one of them, and we did have, you know, you can look at that several different ways, you know.
About how much lost revenue do you think we have?
Well, Kathy's been working on that.
Yeah, we, we know we lost gas tax money. We know that because the pool wasn't open, we lost revenue from the pool, which.
Not much, but it's, we didn't lose that money.
Yeah.
I'd say we saved expenses there, though.
Yeah, we saved $1.9 million.
Oh, yeah, oh, no, yeah, that.
The park lost $1.80 because they took around the building down.
Yeah.
The utilities lost $1.80 because they charged late fees, so there's, we go through.
No disconnects and stuff, and.
So we know that because of COVID, we did lose some.
It's gonna be pretty sizable.
Yeah, and now you can count that, or you can move on and, and go to, you know, whatever, you know, the other things you want to talk, you know.
The interesting part about that is, you know, they're, they're saying, we take, the way you figure that out is you take, 2019 is gonna be like your base year, you look at the revenue for 2019, and you compare it to 2020 to see how much you've lost, you've lost. So, and then, but they're not really telling you how to put that money back into a particular fund that you lost. They say you can't transfer money between funds, so I don't know how they're gonna, we're kind of waiting on state board to advise us on how to do, what the steps we need to take to do what we need to do to.
Yeah, but when you put in the fund, they almost make you seem like you have to come up with something to spend it, you know, and not, you know, pay back.
Right.
You know, they almost make you feel that way, but.
I mean, lots of people are wanting to say, you know, get your plan in place right away, do it right away, but then there's some that are saying, sit back and realize what your priorities are for the.
I think we, you know, hopefully we wait for some guidance, more guidance, you know, not get too anxious and, you know, but.
Just get your preliminary.
But I have, you know, been thinking about it on the wastewater, sewer, and, I mean, so we'll see.
Can you build sidewalks? Tip the structure.
I don't.
As long as they're six feet apart.
Yeah, I don't know, but yeah, that's, that's all we know, but we'll pay, we'll keep you informed and make sure, you know, when we find out more, we're passing on, for sure. Any other questions on this? I, I think we're okay, just go ahead.
If I know, I'll pass all my, if I know, I want you guys to know what's going on.
I'm glad to keep it up on it.
It's a lot of moving parts.
Yes.
All right, if you have any, no more questions, this ordinance will be up for adoption in the next council meeting. Okay, other business, before we get into what we talked, I, I had a company, I know the spyglass thing, I wanted to go over and get you guys' opinion on this. I had a company, they come to us, and they came to the city before, but we didn't do anything with them, but they came to IT, and they was talking about some of our bills, and this company would go in and check our AT&amp;T bills, Verizon, sort of, things like that, and see if we had any, if we're being charged properly, if we're paying a fee that we shouldn't be paying. Now, right now, they come up with this, and we have no obligation to them, but if we decide, and this is the savings they came up with, that we, but if we decide to go with them, their fee is that first year's savings. Now, I got this, and, and before I said, give them an answer either way, I wanted to bring this to your attention tonight and get your thoughts, you know, there's a $24,000 savings in a three-year period, but that's, there'd be contracts involved, and I definitely wouldn't sign it unless, until I get Tim to look at those contracts, if we decide to go that route.
What's our current spending in those, those areas? The savings is off of what number?
Uh, monthly, and this is annual savings, we had all the, they, we had to produce the bills to them.
Right.
And I didn't bring, bring these three items to you yet, because I just wanted to bring it to your attention, but they took our A&amp;T T and our Verizon and our long distance on the AT&amp;T, and looked at that, and by changing our long distance and our AT&amp;T, Verizon was a very minimal savings, the AT&amp;T was, was the 6100, but Verizon was very small. And I got those figures, but I just wanted to introduce it to you.
I mean, it's like a 10% savings, or is it?
Um.
Are we spending $60,000 a year on 18?
I have to, I, I got the, those papers, I'll have to get that to you. Like, yeah, I have to look, for instance, and see how big, what percentage that was, and let you guys know. But, you know, I'm a little, I'm a little, like I talked to Beth today about it, being their fee would be the first year's savings, I'm a little skeptical about paying them that money without seeing it coming to us.
And wanting to guarantee that that's gonna be our savings.
Well, I'd have to see it.
Well, no, I mean, guaranteed.
Yes, yeah.
Because they can save, they're gonna save you anything they want.
Yeah.
But I think the payment is what we would actually save, I think, we'd pay them after we do the savings, I would agree.
Well, it'd have to be that way, I think.
But the wireless thing kind of gets me, because, I don't know, a couple years ago, I brought up switching to AT&amp;T, but I got a lot of resistance, because we do this reimbursement on the phones, people can have their personal phone, and we're gonna reimburse them, in my opinion, a lot of money, versus what you can actually go on the market and get. And we could have saved, at that time, over $1,000 a year if we went, went with this company, but, so, and I was giving that advice for free.
And on, on the other thing, and I don't have this on here, because we're getting it anyway, since we went to RTC, that's, you know, and we're saving money from, Sparklight's gonna be gone, and we're gonna save money there, and it's gonna offset what we got with RTC, that's gonna be a wash.
So who, whose job is this, exactly?
Who?
Is there a person, but this is their job, to keep track of these type of contracts?
Well, it came to IT, IT brought it to me and, and asked if we wanted them to do their analysis to see if there was any savings out there.
So, so I guess my question is, why would we pay them eight grand when we could put it on IT to go out and shop and just do it ourselves?
What's PRI, was that?
Just bypass, bypass and let my.
We know what that is.
I don't know.
Primary. What's the PRI? What's the last one that's the most saving? What is that?
That was, that was the AT&amp;T bill.
The PRI is?
Well.
Not the long distance?
Yeah.
So the PRI is the main phone lines, not?
And another was long distance.
Okay.
But I, I don't know, that's a good question, I don't know. If, I would think IT could get to these companies just as well as this company could, I, I don't know.
When, when I was at Midwest and RIT did that for us, Matt did all that.
And I listened to her, and I was like, okay, you know, and, yeah.
I do that for our company.
Do you? Okay.
So maybe it's something like.
Yeah, and that's why I wanted, you know, see what he thought, because I was, you know, very mixed feelings, you know, and I.
I mean, I appreciate them talking, but we can probably define it, but.
Yeah, well, yeah, and we, and we could, and I don't think I have to do, and we said this to get go, I just, if we don't want, I just say no, and, and that's it, you know, if we did say yes, there's contracts to be signed, you know, and da-da-da.
And if we sign the contract, because I wanted to do that, would we, then we get an invoice then for $8,049 in taxes?
I guess, and.
We'd sign up front?
And I wouldn't want to pay it up front, because that would scare me.
I wouldn't think so, I think that they would.
But that's what they make it sound like, yes, that's would be, but I, I'm real skeptical, no.
No, because I.
And I don't know, I, I could check that, but also, our IT, we haven't had that conversation with Tim, and.
Well, I can help him with the wireless and your primary phone system, we just reduced ours tremendously last year.
Okay, okay, but that's, you know, that's why.
And we don't even have long distance anymore, because it's included in the primary.
On the claims, it says $1,459 to AT&amp;T. So I'll get that monthly.
That'd be monthly, yes.
That'd be $34,000.
Because I'd be shocked.
And they're saying they can save you $670 a month.
That's pretty good savings.
I would be shocked if they're talking about your, your stuff in your police cars, if that's all we're saving.
Yeah.
Our Verizon bills, roughly, I think, $270.
Verizon was very small.
It's very cheap.
It was like.
For that data for the police.
Might have been 40 cents a unit.
Yeah, I would say.
It was about 40 cents a unit.
I would say there's no savings for him.
No, very little on the Verizon.
That's pretty good.
The Verizon was the, so, yeah, we could do that, I mean, that's why I wanted to, you know, I got this, and I wasn't gonna answer it without talking to you guys, and that's why I brought it to your attention tonight.
Maybe I could run a report for, of AT&amp;T and see for the last year, how much we have spent with AT&amp;T and Verizon, which you guys can bring your review.
So do I follow? How do you get? It's spark light.
And I just got this, and I wasn't, you know, we weren't, want to act or nothing like this on it tonight, but I just wanted to bring, bring.
Information process.
You know, and then even if we did it to ourselves, I mean, if we have this go by and we decided to do it ourselves, I mean, you know, and can, this gives us something to maybe aim for.
It's worth looking at and talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand this, right, once we get the RTC in, in place, Sparklight, we won't go on the page.
Sparklight, when the contract's, 7:30, July 30th or 31st, I forget how many days in July, but 7:30, I believe, the contract's over, and we're gonna send a letter prior to that to them saying, you know, we're done.
They'll be done, and, and in exchange for using our poles, RTC will give us our internet.
Yes, 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 yes.
Zero net contract.
Yes.
We're gonna be saving that money anyway.
Which was around $30,000 to $35,000.
Yeah, somebody, some people use 40 for that number, but yes, it's pretty much what we're saving from Sparklight, it's a wash.
Should we talk to them about telephone?
Well, nah.
Yeah, RTC, they, they, they contract out also, they don't, they don't have phones.
So.
They're very infant in that.
Yeah, I understand that.
And she was wanting to answer, but, you know, I, I think this, like you said, we, hopefully something we can do ourselves, and we use this for.
Because we looked at them.
Amen, something to aim at.
I get those scans and, and tomorrow or Wednesday, and that's what.
When Rex was, didn't Rex cut a lot of that, because we had a lot of lines that we weren't even using.
Yeah.
See, and I think the police department has an AT&amp;T, do you guys still have that line that you have to have for 911?
Yes, I think so.
Not in the law yet.
So you can't even change, that's, that's a contract that's outside of that.
Yeah, that's.
After Chicago.
Yeah.
I have a question on the RTC thing, so, electric department is not getting paid for pole contacts?
No.
If the whole city gets free internet?
City building, or city, Washington building, yes, yes, yes.
So, what's the lost revenue to electric department? Just.
Zero, because they're what, they didn't have the revenue to begin with.
RTC didn't pay pole contact?
RTC didn't have.
RTC didn't pay.
RTC wasn't here.
We, we got stuck with some of these others, we had some pole contacts, a little bit with some of these other, yeah, yeah, but it wasn't, it wasn't that much, I mean, it was, it was less. But it wasn't, it wasn't that much. I mean, it was, it was less. I don't know exactly how much, but it was less than, you know, not every pole. But I remember Joe, when he's in, he talked about this in twenty nineteen about RTC and we had that.
We don't have none of that. KDL, AT and T and Sparklight.
You might lose some of that eventually, but. Over time, over time.
And we've already told them that on this middle section, they, they're going to have to do something with their poles, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Because the poles are going to be gone on the highway, so they got to do something. They've already been told that, for that middle project. Okay. We'll handle that and if I have to give them an answer, I'll say no and we'll, we'll try to resume this ourselves. Then, of course, we've talked earlier and I wasn't going to talk about this, but I just combined dispatch. I think we need to, you know, maybe give some guidance, so like you guys said earlier, to Tim and see if we can.
You mean on the sound ordinance?
I mean, I, I, yeah, I mean, on the noise ordinance, I'm sorry.
I, I mean, I, I would make a recommendation that we instruct him to look at the Evansville ordinance and fill, pull it out to what he feels like is necessary with diffusing their readings for now, but then once that's completed in a draft form, we can look at it and make our recommendations and then go from there.
I would agree with that.
I agree.
Now, and, yeah, I, I agree. I mean, we've got to keep, I mean, that'd be a good way to just keep moving.
That way, keep moving forward when you get something.
Yes.
A question clarified.
Okay.
Thank you.
We talked about, air conditioner was on and was that the bar's air conditioner?
That was bar's air conditioner.
But that would count. I mean, that would count as a noise if it's air.
Unfortunately. But you can exempt some things. I mean, like in Evansville, one that exempts lawn mowers.
Yeah.
At one thirty-one?
Well.
And, no, yeah, you got a noise ordinance, you know, pretty much all the time and then you got.
People would mow at one thirty, I'm sure. Evansville's special.
I've seen people mow at one thirty.
I'm not doubting that, I'm.
We can look at it and actually, I think this would be a good, keep this thing moving and I think it's a good.
We can just get a base and then add to it or take away what we think's not necessary or whatever.
Yeah.
Get a start on it.
Okay. And then one other thing on the combined dispatch, I just gave you this information. I think you guys got it. If not, we'll get it to you. I think because of Randy's email, I missed Kenny's, but I just want to look at it and I, I told him, you know, and then let's talk about, see if we come back the next meeting and, and see what we think. I mean, I don't know if we can even do it then, but we need to just have more communication, talk about this next meeting.
They're going to talk about tomorrow in their meeting, so I don't know what they're going to talk about, but I'm thinking they're trying to move forward tomorrow, which I told Nathan in my email today that I don't think the city's ready because the city council never even talked about it.
We just had this.
No idea what's even being talked about.
The majority of us is new to this.
So that's when he gave us the May fifteenth?
Yeah, well, no, if, and, and not, and not so much, he just wanted to know if we thought the city wanted to move forward with this by May fifteenth and not so much, you know.
Not all the details.
Yeah, not all details. But this was all kind of within the last week. We, this is a three-year thing, but this is a lot different than what we had. You know, if we paid the four hundred and some thousand like we do now on our salary and stuff and then they want a hundred and fifty startup, I mean, that's, you know.
That's about three hundred.
That's a lot. That's a lot to put out, you know, that we don't normally put that much out. I mean, we do put the salary, of course, out, but.
I can forward the email chain that was going on the past couple of days, everybody too, to kind of see what was going back and forth so that everybody's kind of in that loop too.
Yeah, I kind of, and I kind of like to see a summary of exactly what they're talking about.
Right. Well, that's, that's it.
Yeah.
I understand.
We don't have, we don't, we don't have any more than that.
Yeah.
So then at the same time, are they just wanting us just to give money and stay out of the loop? Or are they wanting us to be a part of a couple of us?
Our dispatchers would be gone. They'd be county employees. We'd be, we'd be given that money and they'd reduce every year, but we'd be, they'd, out of the loop. Originally, they was going to have a committee.
Yeah, with representation of it, but now, if doing it this way, there would be no representation for the city after.
I think they, I think they need to be some kind for the first ten years while we're still involved in it.
They're basically, there would be no board. It'd just be absorbed as a, as a county department.
Dispatch is a huge deal for us.
Yeah.
The information they get is vital.
Yeah.
So I would want somebody on that board at all times to have an input because it is a huge.
Yeah.
That's why I asked the question today to Nathan because they were not saying anything.
I think it almost has, needs to be, has to be.
Absolutely.
And I, I may, and I knew, well, I didn't know you was going to be here, but I wanted, you said, now, I'm glad you're here because I want your, to give us, you know, how you feel about this because Todd was involved in it and Trent's involved in it, but now you're there.
And I kind of had a lunchtime conversation with him on.
I mean, we want, we want to make sure you're on board because.
If, if it's done right.
Yeah.
Yes. I mean, it's, I, I want, I want to do it right. I mean, I want representation on the board.
Yeah.
We just, we have the same system we use it right now, still. We use it two completely different ways. It's just, there's small things need worked out too.
Yeah.
So have you been, any of these?
No.
There really hasn't been any since he's came in.
Yeah, Todd was involved and him as the fire chief before.
Yeah, yeah.
But this is totally different than what we just had.
This was, just came up this past week.
I feel like maybe I step back and breathe there and get everybody on the board again.
Oh, we, we do. You know, Trent worked hard on it and I was involved and it just kept spinning its wheels, so.
What's, what's the major two differences, number of calls between county and?
We had that at one time.
I hate saying this off on camera because I don't, I'm sure, like, we're, we're about double.
I would, I would think so.
Long calls.
Yeah.
I mean.
Well, it, it depends.
The problem, the problem is the county.
Long business, why they're about double on calls.
The problem is county is the fall over for Posey County nine-one-one. So if their dispatch goes down, all their calls go to Davis County and that happens occasionally and they get a large volume of calls because it's normally during.
Bad weather.
Bad weather. So that skewed the record and Jenny was able to pull out a lot of those to allow us to have a real true number, but, you know, they still get those calls, so.
I probably have twenty nineteen's calls on both sides. I probably have that in my folder in there. We have a lot of information. That folder's very, we've had a lot of.
Yeah, I thought I had it in here.
But I, I probably have that where I can get that to you guys. It'd be twenty nineteen, but it'd give you an idea, you know, of what calls.
How would we?
I've seen most of them.
How would we handle line allegations and all that? Would it still be sheriff's department then if it becomes?
We told them they need to take it all.
Yes. That would be the hundred thousand dollars that they would want to pay for that utility dispatch.
So that's electrical, water?
Yeah, all the utilities.
All utility side. Animal control's in with the law enforcement stuff, so.
No, I was just curious.
Yeah.
If they were separating.
They mentioned that one, about a week ago, and we said, no, you know, just nine-one-one only, and we said, no, we can't do it.
Because it's like eight percent or something.
Yeah, eight, seven point nine.
They're just doing nine-one-one calls. That's taking like roughly eight percent of our ultimate.
Yeah. So we can't leave our dispatchers go because we still have to do those services and that's most of our costs.
The running, the policing cost.
So we said, we can't do that. So then they came back and said, okay, we'll take it. So, you know, we have, we have to be careful here because, you know, he, he's kind of pushing, but this is something that, that we've got to live with once we make the, you know, once it goes into effect, that's it. I mean, we, we've got to make sure.
And, you know, everybody, we don't want to get into the part where Vigo County and Terre Haute did this and all of a sudden, a different chief and man, they were, it's a fight. And, you know, Terre Haute makes their own dispatch again and it was, we, we make, we got to make sure we do it right the first time, in my opinion, so that we don't have a, a problem later on down the road with, when we're not here.
Yeah, because, you know, it could backfire. Down the road, we had, a city could have a savings down the road, but, but. But they also said, you know, county, the taxpayers are already paying for this, so they feel like the city shouldn't have to. The, the ones that's in there now says that they think we shouldn't have to pay. That's why they would want to pretty much get rid of it down the road where the city don't pay anymore. They think that's just.
Um, I did a cross announcement on that.
Yeah.
I think it was a projection of five years.
Yeah, it was. And it, and it.
Kind of out the window because they didn't like the number and all.
Yeah, yeah. And so there's, just look, we'll try to get some more information out to you guys and then, you know, I don't know. It's, it's been.
I think, I think one of the sticking points on the old plan was, and this is, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but Humble came up with about one million, maybe a little over one million dollars to run a combined dispatch. And our budgets combined at the present time, the best that the county could come up with, because theirs is in with the jail budget, was around nine hundred thousand. So there's a hundred thousand dollar shortfall that was going to cost more money in Humble. But in the long term, over the five years, it became less because of maybe not needing the same amount of dispatchers and if somebody would leave, just not replace them. And then the radio contracts, which are separate now, would become one and then be maybe less money savings there. But the original outlay at the beginning would be more money.
Yeah, that difference was going to be paid by E nine-one-one money. That difference on the two, two budgets, city budget, county budget, that money was going to be paid by that, but.
And that's when they would have a board, which would have city representation from the council and from public safety and then they'd have a couple of people, one from the volunteer fire departments, kind of like a makeup of all the public safety and.
It would, it would be a good idea. Has it been done successfully anywhere in the state?
Oh, several, yeah, several. The state pushed for this about, oh, eight, nine years ago. My last eight or nine years in the fire department, they was pushing for combined dispatch. They kept going that direction, but they never did get there completely and mandate it.
Because they couldn't get it around.
I think there's very few counties that have two P S A, which are, which are numbers for dispatch centers. So we were one of the minorities in the state as far as counties that have a separate dispatch P S A. Now, there's different dispatches that run under the same P S A number. We're, we're kind of a unique situation.
Okay. So, yeah, I just, there again, want to bring it up. We'll get some more information out to you. I think we just got to be very careful and I'd say, like Chief said, we definitely, I think we should have a board and if we, we pushed it that day and they came right back and took what we said, so if we push for that, we probably can, you know, we'll see how that goes.
I really feel like, you know, the police chief and the fire chief and, you know, somebody from the utility department need to be in on these conversations.
They're the ones who use it.
They're the ones that are going to be, the ones that are going to be using this thing. We're going to make the decision that's going to affect them.
Yeah.
They're on the backside.
Yeah.
That's, that's where we touch the community everywhere too.
Yeah, every day, you know, every day. Yeah, okay. We'll get some more information out. I'll get that out to you guys. That's some of the stuff we got and give you some more stuff to look at. Okay. All right. Anybody else got anything for the council tonight? Okay. Councilman Gresh, you got anything?
I just want to say the pool looks good.
Yeah.
Have we got any personnel?
We have, we're going to get that. We had a little bit of problem with the filtration system today. They, they're coming down tomorrow and they're going to correct that for us because we didn't use that at all last year. And it was a pretty new system back in twenty nineteen and we're having a little problem. So they're going to come down and correct it and put a new piece of equipment on there, no charge. Kip told me today that the stipulation was that, you know, we, we buy, we have to buy the chlorine from them, but we do that anyway because the type of chlorine you have to buy because that system is, they're the only ones we know of that sells it. So that's no problem, but they're coming down and hopefully can get that solved tomorrow.
Was there any additional costs because it was set all summer long?
Set night for a year?
No.
That would go toward COVID for us?
Well, yeah, yeah, I mean, but, yeah, we, because he said that, we must have a real small warranty on that because he said the warranty expired, but they're going to take care of it. They're coming down, putting a new piece on it and it's, it was just, it wasn't allowing the chlorine to get into the system is the pump, I guess, you know.
It's going to hit by lightning or something.
Yeah, so they're going to correct it tomorrow. Kip said it should be up and going, but, yeah, it looks good. The guys are getting it back going. We'll talk about that later. Right now, we haven't had abundance of employees put applications in. So we'll see what that number is. We might have to adjust the hours a little bit because of the number of employees that we have right now that's signed up for with us. So we'll see, but it, we're going to, it's going to be there. Kip thinks maybe at the worst, we might have to just adjust the hours a little bit back, so I'll keep your breast to what's going on there. Okay. Councilman Doyle, you got anything?
I don't have anything.
Kenny, Councilor.
Fifty's looking very good.
Yeah.
Let's get close.
Yeah, they, we pushed the, they say, they tell me May third, we're starting to mill and pave. And they pushed things back a little bit because we added a little bit on our project and they did a good job, you know, but May third, they're supposed to mill and pave and they're finishing up the last few driveways and a little bit of sidewalk between sixth and seventh. So it's getting there. I'm, I'm excited to get this part over with and. Yeah, so, yeah, good.
Do you have ribbon cutting on it?
We can. We can, you know, put a ribbon across so we can drive through it or something. I mean, yeah, yeah. Get Mary Wilman drive through it or something.
Dan said Sunday that they probably wouldn't have all the dirt in, but they can work that.
Yeah.
After the paving.
Yeah, yeah, they can work that. They got a lot of it in. It's, yeah, it's pretty well, you know.
It's a Meridian with dirt.
But, yeah, they, they said they could finish that up afterward, after the fact, just adding that dirt and then they're going to seed it.
Are they going to seed it or saw it?
They're going to seed it. Nick said they wishing, knew what the money was going to be like, you know. We didn't know how this project's going to go, so they figured seeding it instead of siding, but what it turned out, we probably could have sawed it, but.
I vote for artificial turf because that's the only grass I'm going to have.
But, yeah, it's looking good. Councilman Brown's got anything? Tim, you got anything for that?
No, I don't.
Councilman.
I have nothing.
Camp Thing, Councilman Ammons, Councilman like.
Just the Bedford Roadkill, but I agree. I'm going to go with Casper on it.
And, yeah, and we're going to, yeah, we're, we went, they went out there yesterday. We're, we're going to get that done, I promise. We're moving on it. Yeah. So we're working on it. We'll get that done and hopefully, I'm going to get that. I couldn't find the information Ed gave me about materials. I'm going to look and find out if I even have to ask Ed to send that to me again because he gave me, I'm pretty sure he gave me a price on materials if we did it that way, but we're going to see which way and get something done. Okay. Beth, you got anything?
No, sir.
All right, all right. Audience didn't have anything, so I'm going to call this meeting adjourned. Board of Works in safety in five minutes.